Morning everyone, we are just waiting for some more people to attend so we will start hopefully as soon as possible. If people aren't in attendance, we'll come back and give another update in the next 10 or 15 minutes or so. Thank you.
Sorry about that, forgot to press my microphone. Good morning everyone. Welcome to the Licensing Subcommittee on the 11th of July. My name is Councillor Jane Dunn and I'm going to be chairing today's meeting. So we'll go through with introductions first, okay? And I'll move to my right.
Morning Councillor Vicky Priestley.
Good morning Councillor Lewis Chin Chin.
Good morning, I'm Jane Gough from Licensing and I'll be reading the report this morning.
Morning Samantha Bond, Legal Advisor to the Subcommittee.
Hi, my name's Joanne Boutima, I'm the Business Owner.
Could you just repeat your name, I don't want to say your name incorrectly.
Joanne Boutima.
Please forgive me if I don't pronounce it correctly.
A lot of people struggle, I get called Joanne a lot so that's fine.
And I'm Rob Collins, which will be the General Manager running the business day to day.
I'm Joanne Boutima and... Hi brother. Thank you.
Hey, I'm Attaizadi, I'm a Licence Holder.
Thank you, if we could... Oh, sorry, one lower left.
Hello, I'm Elaine Crosswell, I'm from Environmental Health, I'm the Health and Safety Enforcement Officer for Sheffield City Council.
Thank you everyone, okay, apologies for absence. Okay, no apologies noted, so you've got the top team. Lovely, okay, could I ask for declarations of interest please? No declarations of interest, okay, we'll go straight on to item five, which is the Licensing Act 2003, Seven Seas Restaurant, 285 Ettlesaw Road, Sheffield, S118NX. And the purpose... I'll hand over now, who's to... Who's going to be giving the report, is it Samantha? Okay, yeah, if you could just run through all that, thank you very much.
Just check, has everyone got a copy of papers? We have got some stairs if you want to refer to some.
We've got some bits and bobs printed off, is this the full report that was sent through?
Yeah, yeah, I think it's the same isn't it, as before we deferred, yeah.
If we could have a copy that would be brilliant. I was printing some stuff off this morning but the printer was giving us a bit of problems, I couldn't print off the whole thing.
You're fine, so the hearing procedure is just right at the back on page 70. It looks worse than it is, it's relatively straightforward, so Jane, the Licensing Officer, will introduce the report. If there are any questions concerning the report, that's a time for those to be raised, so if there's anything that's inaccurate or incomplete or anything like that, we'll get that flagged and amended for the record. We'll then head over to the responsible authorities this morning, that's Elaine from Health and Safety, who will detail their relevant representations. Members will then have an opportunity for questions from Elaine and with the leave of the Chair, once that's completed, you guys will have the opportunity to ask Elaine some questions as well. We'll then head over to the applicant to outline the case, basically to tell us why we should grant the application today and to respond to any representations made, both at the hearing and in the report. Similar sort of process, members will ask you questions and with the leave of the Chair, Elaine might be able to ask you questions as well. And what we'll then do is give you the opportunity to sum up, so if there's any final thought you want to leave us with, before we take the options as detailed in the report and we'll then go into private session while members take legal advice and consider the application. The decision of the Licensing Committee today will be given in accordance with the requirements of the Licensing Act 2003, regulations made there under. Anytime during the hearing, members can request legal advice, so that can either be an open session, as we are now, or closed, and I think given the numbers, we'll probably step out to do that and then we'll pop back in and report back as to what it is we've been discussing. The hearing's public this morning, so it is live webcast. That's just live streaming, so we can pause that when we go into private session and then we'll resume as we do. And I think that's everything, if that's straightforward hopefully, thank you.
Okay, so can I hand over to introduce the report to Jane?
Good morning everyone, just before I read the report, have we all got copies of the further information that Elaine circulated? Health and Safety Bump that I sent out this morning, have we all had a chance to see that? If not, we've got some copies here for you, I can give you that. You can have it, yeah, by all means, read through it and everything, that's fine. Okay. Do you want a bit of time to read that or do you want to go ahead and read the report?
You can go ahead.
Okay, so welcome everybody this morning for the variation application of Seven Seas Restaurant, 285 Ettlesaw Road, Sheffield, S118NX. So the application was made by Attaizadi and was received by the Licensing Service on the 25th of April 2022. This is Appendix A of your report if you wish to view that. There is a current copy of the premises licence at Appendix B, which is what's in place as it stands today prior to this hearing. And the application... Sorry, the applicant has agreed licence conditions with the Environmental Protection Service, which is the Noise Nuisance Team, as well as also maintaining a condition which is already on the licence pertaining to the prohibition of speakers being used in the outside area of the premises. These are all detailed in Appendix C. So the reason why we've gathered here today is there is an outstanding representation from the Health Protection Service, which is Elaine. There's been... There was an updated plan that was received just prior to the first hearing that we'd scheduled, but that was still unfortunately very different to what was currently in place at the premises and also... So it wasn't laid out correctly and wasn't acceptable in relation to the legal requirements that Elaine needs for a licensed premises. So we had discussions with legal colleagues, given that we were going to turn up to a hearing, which may well have deferred the matter to allow you more time to make sure your plans and the premises was agreed. So the hearing initially was deferred, so I think we deferred for about six weeks, I believe. So it was deferred to today, and here we are. So, everybody's been invited to the hearing. And if you don't mind Chair, I'm going to skip straight through to the Appeal section, which is Section 7. So the Licensing Act 2003, Section 181 and Schedule 5 makes provision for appeals to be made by the applicant and those making representations against decisions of the Licensing Authority to the Magistrates Court. So the recommendations today Chair are that members carefully consider the representations made and take such steps that the Subcommittee consider appropriate for the promotion of the licensing objectives. Thank you.
Thank you, I think I'm correcting saying, if members have any questions to ask at this point? Okay, thank you very much, and now we can go on to the... Is it Elaine next? Yeah, Elaine next, thank you very much. Elaine, would you like to present please?
Thank you. Yes, I visited the premises and met Mr Collins back in May. There are a number of issues at the premises I was concerned about, primarily the access ramp and sanitary provision.
We've just got a microphone issue, we're rectifying it.
Right, okay, thank you. First met Mr Collins at the premises and Joanne Boutima in May earlier this year. There's another number of issues at the premises I was concerned about in relation to public safety and those are outlined in my letter of representation. The principal one being the access ramp to the premises. The second one being sanitary provision. And issues with the bar flooring. Subsequent to that and discussions with the applicant and the applicant's representative, which was a Mr Farzin most recently, Farzin Malakfan, spoke to him most recently. The access ramp, they've provided a new plan now, which shows the access ramp going directly into the premises. The main issue with the ramp is it's too steep and it doesn't comply with building regulations. Now, on the supplementary information that I've provided to you, there's some information about Part M design considerations which benefit public safety. These design considerations are referred to in the Licensing Policy on Public Safety as the ones that we should be looking at. So these design standards for venue safety are Building Regulations Approved Document M, Access to and Use of Buildings, and British Standard 83002, Design of Accessible and Inclusive Built Environments. Now, the issue with a ramped access being too steep is that it can create difficulties for some wheelchair users who lack strength to propel themselves up a slope or have difficulty in slowing down when stopping to descend. Ramps are also not necessarily safe and convenient for ambulant disabled people. And some people with difficulty walking are okay with steps rather than ramps. Ideally, in an ideal world, you would have one of each. Obviously in adverse weather conditions, there's an increased risk of slipping on ramps. And as part of the design, wheelchair users need adequate space to stop on a landing to be able to open and pass through a door without having to reverse into a circulation route or to face the risk of rolling back down a slope. Now, in the case of this premises, it's on a very busy main road and I did, in supplementary information for you, put a couple of photos, one of which shows the view from the doorway down to the road. So I'm hoping you've got that on your picture, it's that one there. And as you can see, just beyond, on the pavement, there's a street tree. Some very uneven paving and then you're straight into the main road, Ettlesaw Road, which is very busy in that area. So one of my concerns is obviously because there's no level area, if somebody's trying to get into the premises, they could roll off backwards and have a bit of a nasty accident. So, as the access of the building is quite important, I think that is something that, given that this one is about twice as steep or two and a half times the steepness of what a ramp should be, I think this is something the Committee might like to take in account. Because in the Health and Safety Enforcement Team, we have a sort of a standard that we try and look at equally amongst all premises and that's things that you've got to safe access and egress is one of those important things. Now, this links in to the sanitary accommodation. The policy, the Licensing Policy encourages the provision of disabled access and facilities when a new application is being made or when substantial operations are taking place. Now, since the original licence application in December 2019, this premises has a new altered pedestrian access to or from the public highway and a new internal customer toilet. So the premises has been extended out at the front, which is why it's closer to the road than it was before. And they've put in place a toilet in the premises for customers which wasn't there before. The standard in the Part M of the... Standard for sanitary toilets, for sanitary provision, is if there's... If a very small premises with less than 25 seats, you would be looking for a wheelchair accessible unisex type toilet, so it's available to everybody. Unfortunately, the toilet as it has been built doesn't meet the standard or the standard for an ambulance accessible standard toilet. So you've got your full wheelchair accessible toilet, which is what we would like to see ideally. You've got an ambulance accessible standard, which is you wouldn't get a wheelchair in it, but somebody with walking difficulty could be, would have enough room to do what they need to do. And then you sort of have your standard toilet that... Which is much narrower basically. So the ambulance accessible is slightly wider than a regular toilet. There's, you know, reduced wash hand basin and you've got more space between any doorways and the seat basically, to give people more room. What the applicant is proposing as an alternative is to put a wheelchair accessible toilet in the yard behind the premises. Now, I would like to point out that this would require someone in a wheelchair going down a ramp which is too steep, outside, round the side of the building through a narrow general which goes all the way, the full length of the building, out to a yard at the back. This is a bit difficult to see just by description. I'm probably a little bit too far away to see it, but it is quite a long way. I don't suppose you can see that, but this is the front of the building and that's the proposed toilet at the back. You would have to go up another ramp, down one ramp, up another ramp, through a general, all the way through the adjoining building, out the other side to a proposed wheelchair accessible toilet outside. Personally, I don't think that's really acceptable in this day and age, but I think that is something perhaps I would appreciate your view on. Now, given that Mr Izadi did come to you a couple of years ago and we explained about the difference, about the standards for toilets, it's a bit disappointing that not only have they not gone with the standard wheelchair accessible as they're aiming with the ramp to be wheelchair accessible, but they've gone for one that's too small and now want to put it in the yard at the back. So, that's the nature of my concerns is primarily the ramp. With respect to the flooring, I suggested that the... That the applicant seek further advice because they were planning to do some paints and product on the tiles to make them less slippery and I just recommended that they sought further advice to ensure it meets the equivalent of what's called a pendulum wet test for slippery floors, just to make sure that it was up to standard. But I believe they've opted to change the tiles on the floor. I would like to mention one other thing. The plans themselves don't mention the basement of the premises. But other than that there is access to the basement and I've clarified with the applicant that this access is staff only and asked them to put that on the plan. But I've also contacted the Fire Officer and Building Control because the basement itself is directly underneath the seating area of the premises. And my understanding is that the building regulation works... The works which is subject to building regulation for the main part of the premises don't include the basement. And I've checked that with their building inspector. So the works underneath the seating area is actually unauthorized works as it stands at present and I believe that the local authority has contacted the applicant to discuss this further because it would be classed as unauthorized works. The reason I mention it is obviously as it's, you know, if they've gone through the building regulations for their main floor, but not underneath. If there's a problem that arises underneath, it could affect the customer area, so that's the only reason I've raised that. But that's being looked at by Building Control. I think that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Would any member or anybody present wish to look at the plans that were shown? Do you know, do you want to have a quick glance at those? Yeah, shall we take a couple of... Do you want to look at those and while we ask some questions? If we can pass those around please, I think I'd like to see them and make sure we all have a look. So have we any questions for Elaine? Yeah, of course, Councillor Chin Chin.
Thanks Chair. Elaine, can I just... Sorry, over here. It's a big room. Can I just ask you a couple of questions in relation to the ramp? You spoke a lot about the steepness of it, but I also noticed the regulations around width and handrails. What is the position on those? Because from the pictures, it looks as though there's a handrail on one side but not the other. Yeah, is there still an issue with that?
Sorry. There should be a handrail on both sides and the minimum width should be 1500 millimetres and this one is not that wide. I think I put the measurements somewhere. The width is 1100 millimetres, so it's narrower than it should be. So once you've got a handrail on both sides, it'll be narrower still. So, it's too narrow and as well as being too steep.
So the issues are the width, the handrail, the steepness and the landing area. Is there anything else that I've missed?
I think that is essentially it, it's too steep, too narrow and it doesn't have a landing area.
And you mentioned that steps would be preferable, are steps not necessary though?
As an alternative to a ramp, you could... If you're going to put a ramp into a premises, ideally you should have steps as well, so if you're aiming to be fully accessible, because some people who are ambulant disabled can't negotiate a ramp very well. But I think it will, this is obviously quite a small premises, so if you are going to have a ramp, then my view is that it should meet the required standard because that is, for obvious reasons really, that is going to be the best option.
Thank you, and I also saw in relation to the disabled toilet at the back of the premises, that there were some concerns over the shared access to that particular area. Would you mind just giving some more insight into those concerns, please?
Is it still on? Sorry. Yes, I've circulated a photograph for you just to get an impression of what that accessway is like. There's also a ramp going into this accessway. Now, the... Above the premises, there are residential flats. The access to those flats is in the general. The fire escape from the flats is in the yard at the back. So, one is it's a fire escape route for the residential property. In the yard itself, there's obviously, it's also shared with... It's also open to another premises. But anybody could go up and down there, so you would need to think a little bit about security, personal safety of people using that access out to the back of the premises. So that's partly the concern there. And also having to come out of the premises and going back inside, you can't cover that area out the front. Now, if it's raining, you can imagine, you're going to go inside, not only are you going to get wet but your feet or your wheelchair are going to get wet, which is going to make it sloppy as well. So, so the concerns are of safety of the individual from any other people that may be around using that accessway. If there was a, potentially if there was a fire issue and people from the flats were coming out, could there be a, you know, clashing in the middle? It's just not an ideal place to put a toilet. Particularly for someone in a wheelchair user who, or someone who has difficulty walking because they're obviously going to be slower walking.
Thank you very much, thanks Chair.
You're welcome, thank you. Any more questions? Have you got any questions? Are we going to make sure you can see the plans before you ask if you wish? Would you like to ask some questions? You're more than happy to direct towards... You're going to have an opportunity to give your side, so this is for you to question.
Yeah, I mean, obviously we had a discussion with Elaine at the premise at the time and we've attempted to come up with some solutions around that time and since then. But in terms of direct questions for now, I'd rather obviously us put forward our solution ideas and then we can discuss where we think's the best way to go from there, if that's okay?
Sorry, I know, it's like musical chairs with a microphone, isn't it? We have to get a bit quick. So used to the zoom on off button, you've forgotten what a real button is. What we'll do is we'll make sure you can have a look at those before you give your representation. Samantha, you wish to ask a question?
It was just of Elaine, obviously the application's been in for a while, we've had the six week deferral and I know there's been a lot of backwards and forwards with the premises. Would you say you've made much headway based on your first objection that was submitted? Because I know there's like the flooring and bits that were outstanding. So is it just purely the ramp and the disabled access toilet in the rear? Is that what's all?
Sorry. I'm told that you're going to replace the tiling to a more suitable one. So that would deal with that issue. The main, obviously, issue for me is the ramp and that it complies with building regulations. And I think the... It's disappointing that the internal toilet doesn't meet the standards given that the applicants were aware of the standards before. So, but I think that has to come down to your decision.
So obviously I imagine you work with a lot of licensed premises across the city. How unusual is it that we've still got outstanding concerns at this point? Is that something you come across regularly or?
Most premises are able to resolve issues. But obviously the difficulty here is the ramp is where it is and how it has been built. You know, unless they want to change the ramp... You know, unless they want to change the ramp, I don't really know much more we can do with this one. But I would say probably of the ones I've been involved with, most issues can be resolved. But usually, the the sorts of issues that are most difficult come down to things like toilets and access. But we try, do try hard to resolve them as far as we can.
Sorry, I know we're going to wait until it's time for us to talk. But just a little note that ever since her first visit, I think she had about between ten to twenty concerns, minor issues, major issues. Ever since then, it's been reduced down to the ramp and the toilet. The tiles in the restaurant have completely been removed and replaced with new tiles. It's been an expensive job and all the paintwork, all the artwork, everything on the walls are ruined because of that. But we're, we've tried as much as we can to improve any concerns she had and to to work with her. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Could I ask a question, please? You mentioned about the ramp and ideally it would have steps as well as just a ramp. And you also talked about the building regs, do you know, on that? What part of that is desirable and what part is statutory and has to be done? I'd just like that clarifying for us, please.
The the access to the premises should comply with building regulations, whether it is the ramp or a step. It it's option, from from my perspective, I just want someone to get into the premises safely.
So building regs is as long as you can access it, which doesn't mean you have to have steps and a ramp. Is that correct? Ideally, we'd have both. But what does building regs say has to be there? That's where I'm getting, I'd just like that clarification. Does it need both or can it just have the ramp if it was a suitable, you know, height? That's what I'm trying to get to the bottom of.
I believe it is one or the other.
Okay, that's, thank you very much. Thank you. Any more questions for Elaine? Okay, fine. Lovely. Thank you Elaine. We'll now go on to our applicant to prepare. Have you got any more questions? You haven't, have you? Just to make sure. You know, there's like a heat haze, you're all a bit blurry. I would often get that, do we in Britain? Lovely. If you'd like to hand over, and we're here to listen. Okay, thank you.
Hi guys. So yeah, obviously, we'll start with the the more positive things. In terms of the pension and wet test that was required, we did seek to go into that. We were looking at hun- hun- several hundreds of pounds for if we were then to treat the floor and then have the test and it failed, we would have been much worse off. So we've decided, even though it wasn't practical, to go the other way and just remove the problem. The tiles, the R eleven that we have now fitted, are are more than than grippy enough. It's one of the highest standards you can get. R twelve, obviously, you get at swimming pools and stuff. So R eleven for a restaurant should be fine. As Shuan said, in doing so, we've had to dig up all of the the levelling solutions and everything that was underneath the tiles, which has kicked up dust over the whole restaurant, which was not ideal. But yeah, flooring, I I believe now is is more than safe. We'd identified that even with the solution that put on, that it was still slightly slippy. So we accepted, yes, you're right, let's just change that. In terms of the downstairs usage, obviously, from working in bars and restaurants for a number of years, before the work was done, it obviously, if it's being used as storage, especially for dry goods such as food, et cetera, the condition of the walls, the floor, everything downstairs was not fit for purpose. So now, all all of the floors, the walls have been treated to a point where it's acceptable. And obviously, down there, all we're looking at having is some dry goods and some overflow drinks for the bar. Obviously, I think initially, the intention was to use it as a preparation area. But we've said that that's definitely not going to happen. Obviously, there's only one entrance and exit. So as far as we're, so we're planning on just using that as a safer storage. And the handrail's been refitted with, so as Shuan was saying, with not just with Elaine, but with different people we've been speaking to, we've come across a number of concerns. So when we done the fire risk assessment, we're working with Shield Safety, which is one of the most recognised companies to deal with safety within hospitality industry. So stuff like the emergency lighting that we'll be adding downstairs, et cetera, et cetera. So as far as far as I'm concerned, I've worked in many venues across the years, which are nowhere near as safe to use. Obviously, in we're moving on, in terms of the the ramp itself, obviously, we're now saying that it can be either steps or a ramp. For me, the the easiest solution is if we remove the ramp itself and we have a step into the premises, we could then buy, you know, the the foldable ramps. So that if if a disabled person comes to the premise, that obviously, we can get out the ramp, assist them in and out of the venue whenever needed. We're more than happy to do so. We could also attach an automatic button to the door, which would then help with the the land, the landing part. So that if it's, if if we push the button, the door opens itself. So you don't have to worry about letting go of the wheelchair, et cetera, to then hold on to doors and rolling and that kind of thing. What we've noticed is, I can pass, I've got a copy to show you. So the building, which is literally next door, is a coffee shop. What they've done is at the front of the property, they've basically built an inlet into the venue, which if if we were to remove the ramp and do the portable, that's one option. But in this case, I can, do you want me to come round and show you? That essentially, it would then make the ramp not so steep because it would go further in. So if you see here, they're they're built in. So what I'm proposing is, option B, is for us to basically move those glass walls in and then the ramp would then be longer and flatter. But obviously, if it can be either or, obviously, the best preference for us would be just to have step access into the venue. And then, as I say, upon bookings as well, we can always ask, is there any accessibility issues that we need to know about? And we can be prepared and ready for them. So obviously, it's it's many, many different ways we could go about it. So either or, as I say, we're we're more than happy to do that. In terms of the the toilet problem, so in regards to the ramp and the toilet itself, so the builder that was doing the work was in contact with Building Control, which is James Bosworth, who I also have a letter from. He is just waiting for the the ventilation to be finalised and then he's happy to sign off the building. So that should be done within the next few days. So the builder was speaking to Building Control at the time and looking at other venues in the area. Many places on Ecosol Road have no disabled access. They have no disabled toilet. It's just steps or toilets are upstairs. So what we're trying to do is 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 meet halfway in a situation where it is is quite difficult and still provide facilities for everyone involved. In terms of the ginnel itself, obviously, we are, we're looking at putting emergency lighting out there. It will have a full refurbishment, so it will look much more visually appealing. If necessary, the, from where you come out of the door and into the ginnel, we can put some kind of cover there if the concern is going to be health and safety in regards to slips and trips. But there is a cover from the ginnel to the outside office, all of that is covered. We have two different solutions for the toilet outside. So there's a main office building that already exists, which would literally, we can lower the floor there and then they can go straight in, no problem. Otherwise, the other option is that there is a toilet already in the yard, which we could extend and make the sizes the same as what it should be for a full accessible toilet. Rather than having the smaller ambulance toilet inside, we're offering, we're offering to build a full accessible toilet out back, both of which, I have two different plans here, which you could have a look at. And we're happy to go with essentially whichever way you guys would think would work better. Yeah, obviously, in terms of the toilet that we have, I think Elaine advised that the the sink that is fitted is coming out into the toilet and it's taking up too much space. We're also happy to change that sink to to make the room that we have more accessible for people that aren't in a wheelchair but still still have difficulty accessing, so they could potentially use that. The door, there's an issue with the door being too close to the toilet. So once again, we can, there's an external door outside of that. So we could just remove the internal door within the toilet. So then the door is then no longer a problem. Otherwise, we could move the door further back. Once again, we're open to interpretation. The issue is, is that with the the toilet that we have inside the building, that wall now contains everything from sockets to fire alarms, to CCTV, to the speakers. And the plaster that is on that wall costs thousands of pounds. It's an artistic, multi-coloured plaster that's been put on there. So for us to remove that wall, to move it ten, fifteen centimetres to the side, to then rebuild it all, at this stage, with all of the money we've already invested, trying to meet everyone's requirements is 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 really difficult for us. So as that's why we've come up with the other solution of building one outside. We know that it's not ideal, but we're more than happy. Obviously, I'll be there on a day to day basis. I've got absolutely no issue assisting people down to the to the rear area every time they need it. Obviously, once I said, as I said, upon bookings, I will ask, are there any accessible people that need assistance? I will then liaise with them when they arrive to the property to make them feel included and welcome. As I say, what what we're offering to provide is much more than I have seen in many venues that I've worked in over the years. So we're we're trying to meet you in the middle, we're trying to do our best. I could just say, fi- finish off by saying, in terms of the running of the restaurant itself, obviously, if we were to move that wall across, that would then mean that the distance between the tables on the either side would then become smaller. So then it would actually danger everybody in the building more because they will have less space to freely move, you know, with plates, hot drinks, all of that. If we then move everything over, we're either going to lose half of our seating capacity or we're going to endanger our staff and the public. So in terms of the the restaurant itself, as I briefly mentioned, we're working with Shield Safety. So now all of the risk assessments, everything involved, staff training, everything is done. It's 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 ready to rock. I think I just need to finish off the food management system with the chef. Otherwise, as far as I'm concerned, once again, I've worked in many places where what we've put in place doesn't exist. So we're going above and beyond to make sure that not only the staff, but the the customers are safe at all times. Any questions, feel free to ask.
Thank you. Questions? Not at the moment. Counselor Chin Chin?
Thanks Chair. With the, I know you spoke about two options at the back for the disabled toilet, the separate toilet and then the one existing one within the office building. What's the situation with that office building? Is it, is it, I think I read that it was leased to, or yeah, leased to someone, a third party? Is that, is that correct?
So that that third party is no longer there. They've now moved. So that's the the office space is is obviously part of our, what's it called, premises. So that is now empty. So we could use that for further storage. But the plan is to build an internal wall within it so that we can, there's a, there's a door on either, can't really see it from here, but there's a door on either side in the concrete yard. So we could still access it from the rear to then use it for storage. And then there's a separate front door, which would just be separated for the toilet itself. That that is best case scenario. As I said, if that's that's for whatever reason isn't acceptable. As I say, there's already a toilet which is used between the two properties, which is part of our premises. But the shop next door, we've agreed can use that as well. Obviously, that's an even smaller cubic foot of what we currently have inside. So for that to happen, we'd have to remove a wall, remove a roof, bring the wall out, rebuild a whole roof and plumbing system. So eith- either way, there's a considerable amount of work that would need to be done and several thousands of pounds being spent to accommodate. But I think this way around, as I say, we can then provide a full size accessible toilet, rather than a very, even even the ambulance, it's an extra twenty centimetres. We feel that it's still going to be quite tight, even if we do do that. So I think we give a better, I know, I know it's it's difficult having to go around, but it will be a bigger toilet.
Thank you. And and just just one question in relation to the ramp. So I know one option you proposed was to have steps and then use and then purchase a sort of foldable ramp to to use when needed. Would that solve the steepness issue? Would you still have that that issue when using that that foldable ramp?
I don't, I don't believe so, especially if, so as proposed in the the picture that I sent round, if we build the square inside, so essentially, we're saving that extra space. The, if we add steps from there and then the removable ramp from there, if you look at copper, which is next door, theirs is the same distance. Because they're built inwards in what used to be. Then obviously, the ramp, rather than going like this, would then be longer going like that. As I say, then if it's, if it, if you think we're going to have more issues with health and safety by having the ramp, we've obviously installed the ramp to try and be inclusive. But if we feel that it's more safe to have a step for ninety, ninety-five percent of our customers and then, as I say, if they liaise with us, push a button for assistance, call the restaurant, wherever it needs to be, then we can bring out the removable ramp, assist them in, assist them out, whatever they need, we will be there. Obviously, we're looking at opening a relatively, I don't want to say fine dining, but high end restaurant where service is at the centre of what we're doing. The kind of food, the kind of drinks and everything that we will be providing is at a level where that will be expected. So we've got no issues doing that to make people happy.
Thank you very much. Thanks Chair.
Could I just ask you then? You said about putting a removable ramp in, where would you actually store that ramp?
I mean, the the most logical place would be to put something on the wall as like a a fitting to keep it secure and keep it by the front door.
Can you sort of point out on that picture where you would actually store it?
Store the ramp, so obviously, inside the property. So it doesn't get stolen or damaged or, obviously, if it's outside and it's raining, then it'll be wet. So it'd have to be stored inside the property. So just inside the door, if we could either put some kind of brackets and it's fixed to the wall. Otherwise, we have plenty of room at the at the rear of the property, in the bar server area or into, potentially in the kitchen, underneath one of the apparatus downstairs. There's several places that we could store.
So can I just ask you one more question then, please? As you walk in through the door, how many tables were at the front and how would you negotiate with a ramp through to wherever you're going to store it?
Just bring you this sheet and then I can point out exactly where everything is from the sheet, is that okay? Yeah, so this, that's what I'm saying, so there's there's no tables there. Sorry, so this, oh, this is the building here. So as we come in, there's one table at the front. But otherwise, you see, you're going in, you've got the toilet and there's there's nothing else there. So what I'm proposing is potentially, we could attach the ramp to this piece of wall that is here, which I don't think would affect anything, we'd have to explore that, which is in that that area there, yeah. Otherwise, as I say, we can store it, there's plenty of space either downstairs, in the kitchen, at the rear of the property, anywhere where we can store it. Obviously, ideally, it would be at the front to make it easier for us. But if you just, yeah, if you just, if you just show show them there, obviously, there's no tables at the front door at all. So it shouldn't be obstructing anybody. So Shuan's just made a good po- point. Obviously, if it is an issue, I'll store it at the front. We could store it, as as we said, there'd be a storage part in the outside office. We could go out, collect it and then come down the ginnel. So it doesn't even have to go through the restaurant, it's never going to go past anyone's food. It's never going to be in anyone's way, if that, if that's preferred.
Can I just ask you then? Have you thought about any preparations for adverse weather conditions? Ie if it's absolutely bouncing it down with rain and you've got somebody sat in a wheelchair outside for a few minutes, getting absolutely soaked? Or you've got that wheelchair person wanting to use the toilet round the back? How long will it take for somebody to see to the disabled person, get them in your restaurant or get them out of your restaurant and up to the disabled toilet?
As it stands, so we have a retractable roof, which is over the front terrace section anyway. But in terms of just so where the ramp is going into the ginnel, that's the only section that isn't currently covered. But we have no issue. but we have no issue creating a covering for that small section. Um, al- otherwise, obviously, once they're into the venue, they can let us know if they need to go to the bathroom and we can make sure that the ramp is there before, before we start moving them, so they're not outside in the rain. Um, and as I say, another thing as well, we could say upon the booking, that if you give us, say, five minutes notice, we will have the ramp out and ready for you, so you literally get out of your car into the restaurant and it, it could be seamless. Um, but as I say, you can't, you can't guarantee that it isn't going to be five, ten times a day. Um, but I'd, I would imagine that obviously us having, uh, accessible people coming in is, is not going to be every five minutes. It's generally, within working in hospitality, it's quite rare that you have several people within the same time, perhaps timeframe, but if it is and we know that because we've put it onto the booking as a special requirement, I can staff accordingly and have an extra member of staff at the venue, obviously just for three me up or supervisor, whoever, so that essentially there's an extra person waiting to assist at all times.
Um, I'll come in at the end, it's okay. Uh, Sun?
So you're going to be general manager, I assume that's DPS as well? Will you be there?
I mean, I, I could be, however, we won't be selling any alcohol.
Oh yeah, of course.
So, once again, I've, I've spent months looking into, uh, alcohol-free products. So this is, the, the, the reason behind it is a religious, is a religious thing. We've got no issue selling, selling alcohol. I've made alcoholic cocktails in the past, but we're trying to offer something different to Sheffield, it doesn't exist. Whereas halal food, alcohol-free drinks, generally if you go into any bar or restaurant, they'll have two or three mocktails which is just fruit in a glass. What we are trying to provide is a safe, calm environment for people of different communities to come down and try something that they may not have had. As an example, I've created some, like an Aperol spritz, it tastes exactly the same as a real Aperol. So we won't be having drunk people, but we will still have a high level of product. It, I've, as I say, I've, I've spent weeks and months researching because most alcohol-free products pose as alcohol-free, but when you actually do the research, it's up to naught point five because that's to do with the licensing thing. If you'd have to buy two thousand litres at once to be drunk from one sitting. But we're, we're, we're going of a fully alcohol-free menu, which as I say, there's some places in London, doesn't exist in Sheffield. So we could create something new and unique and something amazing to give back to the community, which otherwise, they go to people of, of different religions, go to, go to venues and if they don't agree with it or they don't want their, their children to be sat next to people that are free bottles of wine in. So what we're offering is something, something really special.
So we've got Mr. Azadi's premises licence holder, what's going to be your role? What, what's your sort of input in the premises?
Uh, I'm gonna be, uh, uh, I'm going to work there, you know, uh, as soon as the restaurant opened and then the owner as well, so.
Will you be at the premises or are you just sort of on paper and you'll be managing it that way?
Sorry, he struggles with English.
No, no, it's fine, sorry.
I'm gonna work every day, you know, in the restaurant, so I need to, basically I need to know, uh, you know, everything is, uh, is right or everything is, is good in the restaurant, so I see the customers, you know, staff, everyone. I try to make, you know, customers happy, you know, to basically do everything good for the restaurant.
And you're the owner of the premises?
No, sorry. Uh, i- is that, uh, you're asking if I'm the owner?
Hmm.
Uh, my sister is the owner.
Okay.
I help out with, uh, some creative, uh, ideas in terms of food and drinks.
Okay.
And liaise with Rob and my sister.
And sort of experience wise in running other premises, obviously you've got quite a lot of experience. I'm just wondering in terms of your experience, have you worked at other restaurants or things like that?
Um, sorry, are you referring to my brother or Mr.?
Mr. Azadi, sorry.
To be honest, uh, a long, it's okay. To be honest, a long time ago, uh, I worked in a, a luxury restaurant in the, in Iran, in Tehran. It was a really, uh, top restaurant, so I have had a really good experience in the restaurant as well. So I know this is my first experience in the UK, but I've had a really, uh, good experience. Also, I had my own shop in back home, so, uh, basically I know, uh, how to manage, uh, you know, with a shop, with a, um, with a restaurant and also my previous, previous job, I was a, a shop manager. So, uh, I'm really good at, you know, the management in staff or, you know, uh, staff or everything.
And just finally then, obviously these proposals you've come with today in terms of the foldable ramp and everything like that, how come they haven't come out previously? Obviously, we've got quite a lot of time to liaise.
Uh, I, I don't, I don't want to be disrespectful, um, but I, I think Elaine, Elaine will agree. When she comes to the restaurant, we did, we didn't, um, come to a solution there. And then, uh, we were, we were trying to come to a solution, um, couldn't quite manage it. Um, I, I appreciate Elaine's standpoint on all of this. Um, as I say, for us, we're, we're trying to work with everybody, we've ticked off multiple things to make sure that we are compliant. It's just these are the two things that will make a massive difference to the business. So, uh, as I said, we've, we've, we've put in forward several options, um, and we'll see what you think is best.
Well, I've done in terms of questions, I imagine Elaine will pick up in terms of your proposals that you've mentioned, being the expert in that field, so thank you.
Elaine, would you like to ask some questions?
Hello, um, can I just clarify the point about you've built an inspector, that it is actually a private inspector, it's not a local authority inspector? Just wanted to clarify that. Um, I'm just a bit puzzled, Rob, because I, I had an email and spoke with Farzin Malakfam who was authorised by Mr. Azadi to communicate. So I've spoken to him since I last came to see you, but I, I've not heard any more from him recently. Um.
Sorry, just, just for one second. So Farzin unfortunately at the moment is extremely ill, which is also why he's not here today, but he has been assisting us for a while now.
Elaine, any more questions?
Um. No, I don't think so. Um. No, I think, I think that's fine. Don't think I have anything further to add.
Um, I have a couple of, uh. Yes?
Just, I wanna, uh, say something else about my experience. Uh, to be honest, that restaurant, I've worked in back home, it was a, you know, all the celebrity, you know, it came to the sho- it came to the restaurant, so, uh, it's really, you know, uh, I know basically how to deal with the, with the, even like, you know, these kind of people or even like, uh, uh, normal people as well. Thank you.
Sorry, to, to make a note on that, the reason, uh, we are so fond of Mr. Azadi is, he's a very lovable character. I know the situation we're in right now, you can't show that, but he, one of his most important skills are people's skills and, um, uh, uh, you know, wherever he works, people just love him, you know, people come and take pictures of him and, you know, laugh and joke with him, but. Yeah, but yeah, thank you, that was it. But yeah, back to it, sorry about that.
Thank you. Um, you've mentioned about being inclusive, abs- I mean, absolutely. And, uh, we're quite aware that the past couple of years, a lot of people with disabilities have not felt very confident about going out. And that is something I think that we as a, you know, would really want to encourage as a city. So, you know, being disabled access, it might not be in every single place, but I think moving forward, it's an amazing thing to do and also completely the right thing to do. So any business that isn't disabled access-friendly fully, in my point of view, would almost, you know, we really do need to push this as a, um, city, community, whatever. So would you be, would, are you saying there would be somebody there available to help somebody through to a toilet? Um, I know that you want to be open till late at night, don't you, as well? So would that be on booking only? Booking only, not just somebody? Because disabled people go out till five o'clock as well as, uh, you know, younger people. So I'm just wondering about how that would work, because I can understand it in business hours, however. As we know, it's very difficult trade-wise at the moment, but a disabled person should be able to walk through the door at four o'clock and get the same service that they would do at eleven o'clock.
Um, yeah, so obviously in terms of the opening hours, I think we'd already had the late night refreshment as part of the previous licence. Um, but we, I think we will take last admittance, obviously as a last seating, somewhere between ten PM and ten thirty PM to give people an hour and a half, two hours to finish their free courses and finish up, uh, before we close at twelve. Um, but yes, at, at, at any point of the day, um, obviously, we're not going to have a lot of tables, so if we're as fully booked as we hope we're going to be, um, walk-ins may be, may be difficult if we don't have the tables, but we will do everything in our power to accommodate at all times. Um, as I say, it, it's, it's interesting that because this was a shop and it's now becoming a restaurant, we have to follow a different set of rules. But if you look at, this is without including the city centre, but just Ecosole, Ecosole Road alone, there are several venues that have no disabled access, there's no attempts. So obviously, because they were under a different, I'm not saying we have to change the law really, wouldn't you? But it seems that all of the old venues don't have to follow any kind of rules and they can just do whatever they want. Um, so, as I say, there, there's not really that inclusion there, but obviously it's a different set of laws. But we, we will try to do everything that we can to make people not only inclu- inclusive, but feel special. Um, that's, that's, that's all we can do really. As I've worked in a number of high-end venues and I pride myself on my level of service and I'd never, would never want anybody to feel like they're, they're, they're different or not able or, I don't, I don't know how to put forward what I'm trying to say, but we, as I say, it, it, it's, it's not something that we go, oh yeah, we'll just get a ramp, we forget about it. It is, it is within our plans to make everyone happy that comes through that door.
Can I just add to that? So, um, our father, mine and my brother's, is actually an amputee, so he's a disabled person. So we, we know a lot about the struggles of, of a disabled person, you know, from, from personal experience. You know, we've cared for our father, we've gone on holidays with him to places in which, you know, there's been no accessibility. Um, we've, we've, uh, you know, from personal experience, we completely understand and respect that. That is absolutely essential and that's something that we want to, we want to definitely accommodate because, you know, our own, as, you know, our own father being affected by such a thing, it's, it makes it more personal for us. So we completely understand the struggles and why we need to do better.
Thank you. Thank you for that and thank you for answering the questions so honestly. Because I, I personally feel, and I know that it's the feeling of the city, that our strength is our inclusivity. And we know that a lot of people don't feel very, still comfortable with the pandemic, so, uh, yeah, but thank you. Is there any more questions? So, I couldn't, yeah. My name's sake, we can't have two J's spelt the same. I keep telling her she's got to change hers. Jane?
I've been here longer, you change yours. Um, just a couple of quick ones really. Um, so you mentioned you're not going to be licensed for alcohol. Are you going to allow people to bring your own? To bring their own, should I say?
Uh, that was the initial idea. Um, I have kind of put my foot down and said absolutely not. Especially with, with, uh, with an off-licence next door, we're trying to create a nice, relaxed environment where people from all ethnicities can enjoy it. If they're going to walk next door and buy a bottle of Hardee's wine for five quid and bring it in, obviously in most restaurants, you're looking minimum twenty pound for a bottle of wine, Dom, Dom Perignon, hundred and eighty pounds. If we were going to go down that route, we would, we would sell it. But for someone to go next door and buy four bottles of wine for twenty quid and come in and get absolutely sloshed and ruin the environment, it's just something that I'm personally not interested in doing.
Okay. Thank you. Um, that's fine. The other thing was really pointed at Elaine. So all the suggestions that have been put forward today, are you aware of any of those up until this point? Or have you seen any paperwork up to now that reflects what's been put forward by an applicant today?
I've not seen anything on this idea about having a, changing from a ramp to steps or from using portable ramp. Um, we did have discussion about the use of the existing toilet in the yard, which is really right round the back, and I said that is not a suitable area to use the, to have a toilet in the rear yard.
Okay, my, my, my viewpoint on that was obviously with the applicants bringing forward some further suggestions, they'd obviously have to meet the okay from, regulatory wise, from health protection. So in terms of decision-making today by the committee, I'm just thinking that they've got to be compliant in order for that to be made. So I'm just wondering where we stand in that really, because if the brand new option's being brought forward, how are we going to make that decision if they've got to be okayed by health and safety first? That's what man, that's what I'm thinking.
It, it's sort of a point I was, I was going to raise in one of the options. Obviously, I don't know what's going to happen, I'm not prejudging anything, could be to grant the premises licence subject to health protection signing off on the proposals you've made, if that's the route we want to go down. Obviously, we also have the option, not a fan favourite, we can defer to allow you time to have those discussions and to go through those proposals with Elaine to sort of save further time. There's, there's a lot of basically different options that we can do. I mean, if you guys want to have a discussion outside, you know, if we have a little break and you can table that with Elaine, I'm not adverse to that at all, it's, it's whatever you guys think best. Obviously, Elaine is the responsible authority, she's the expert in the field. It's why we've still got this hearing going ahead, because there are still the outstanding concerns. So it's, it's for you guys to either agree, if you can't agree, then it falls on us, basically.
Uh, sorry, just a little, no. Uh, in terms of not mentioning this, the foldable ramp before, we have apologies about that, but, uh, we've instructed, we've instructed a representative which, uh, was missi- speaking to Mrs. Cresswell. And, um, well, that's why on our behalf, we wasn't speak, communicating with her anymore. Uh, so I, I was, I think from my knowledge and speaking to Mr. Farzin, that he had, uh, told, uh, Miss Cresswell about the foldable ramps. Uh, and even before that, there was several emails with us and Mrs. Cresswell, um, regarding all the other issues that there were, but once we got Mr. Farzin involved, uh, and he came up with the idea of the foldable ramp, we just thought he would communicate. So apologies if that's not been brought up any earlier. Thank you.
I mean, would you find it helpful to have discussions now, say, ten minutes or something, if you, I don't, it's up to you. It's, it's your application, so you can have a discussion or we can make a decision on it. It's, it's up to you.
Uh, uh, obviously, we're, we've always been open, uh, to discussions. Uh, and we, as I say, we've, we've tried to work with Elaine on the list of things that needed to be improved. Um, so I think that the issue we were having is that, um, obviously, we needed to come up with a solution that Elaine was happy with and then we basically didn't know what isn't, isn't acceptable, et cetera. So we asked her, well, what, what would you prefer? We were then met with, well, you need to tell me what you're going to do. Um, so this is us saying, this is the, this is the best we can do. Um, so it's just obviously up to Elaine now whether, whether she accepts.
So would you like to go through to the room to have a quick discussion on that? That's fine. Okay, shall we?
Ten minutes or however long it takes.
Yeah. As long as you, you've got as much time as you need. Yeah.
And we'll do whatever we need to do tech-wise. I think if we pause it, yeah, that'd be helpful. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We've just had a short recess for the applicants to discuss along with Elaine. Um, who would like to feedback? Who would like? Um, who would like to feedback, who would like to, okay, Elaine, if you'd like to feedback please?
Right, okay, thank you. Um, well, we've had a good chat about the access ramp and, um, the, the applicants have come up with a couple of alternative designs which may work, but I've suggested that really they need to confirm that with their architect, that it is physically possible to do either of the options that they've come up with. Um, and probably the best way forward for that would maybe to consider a condition that we deal with that matter by look, you know, they've come up with some proposals and then we have a look at it and then, you know, they, they have their licence on the basis of complying with that condition. Um, with respect to the toilet, we haven't really progressed that, does that help?
Thank you. Have you got anything to add that you wish to add?
Um, yeah, I mean, I've been kinda drawn all over the thing that I brought with us today with the, uh, access, it's a similar access for the place next door. Um, if you want, I'm more than happy to come round and, and show you what our two ideas are there. Um, but yeah, uh, I think obviously if we can find a way where, I think the steepness was the main issue. Um, but as far, as far as I'm aware, I don't know the facts and figures, so I don't wanna speculate too much in this, but I'm quite sure that removable ramps follow a different set of guidelines, but once again, that's for us to go away and, and check.
Thank you, I personally don't need to see the drawings, I think we've heard that we need to see them back from an architect, so, though I do have an art degree, so, but I'm not an architect, um, if either of, um, like, no, that's fine, but thank you for the offer, okay. Right, so I think we've come to the point of the meeting now, is there anybody that would like to ask any more questions at all before we move to consider, which will be done, yeah. Okay, Sam, if you'd like to sum up please before we move to consider the application.
I think I've said quite a lot today, but if you need me to clarify, uh, anything, I'm more than happy to go re-over things that have been discussed. Said, yeah, obviously we're not, we're a bit unsure of what happens after, after this stage, but just obviously if there were conditions and stuff put on to the licence application, obviously we'd like to know exactly what they are going to be, um.
So I'll get Jane to read the options out, obviously if we do determine to grant it with conditions on, obviously we'll let you know what they are. They might get firmed up a little bit in writing afterwards if that's the route we go down, because obviously they have to be enforceable and they are legally binding, so we'll, if and when we get to that point, we'll, we'll address that then, but yeah, Jane wants to give us the options, that'd be great, thank you. Does Elaine want to sum up? Elaine, have you, have you got anything else further to say?
Um, just that if, um, it's minded to grant with conditions that we ensure that a building control completion certificate is available prior to the premises opening.
Okay, thank you. Right, so I will read the options now. So the options available to the committee today are to vary the premises licence in the terms requested, to vary the premises licence with conditions or to reject the whole or part of the application, thank you.
Thank you, I think it comes to this point where we're going to go to the closed part of the meeting. Um, could, we will stop the recording, okay, and if you could possibly leave the room. Yeah, okay, I know, I feel like a head teacher. Yeah, go and, go and wait in the naughty room in there.
So the, the building control certi-
Thank you, okay, all right, thank you, thank you for your time. Right, um, the committee has come to a decision, we are going to vary the premises licences, licensing, nine point two, but we do have two conditions, that the ramp, the architect plans do meet, uh, building regulations by the council and two, that the existing internal toilet also meets the building regulations of the council. I'll hand over to Sam Amther now, thank you.
Thank you, so they've agreed to vary it subject to those conditions being approved first, so we, we wouldn't, the premises can't open until those conditions are met and signed off by building control, obviously with the input of Elaine as well. You do have the right of appeal against those conditions being imposed on the licence, so that's within 21 days of receiving your notice, which I'll draft after this hearing, so that's to the magistrate's court and what they'll do is they'll sit exactly as members have done today and consider whether the decision that they made was right in light of all the information before them at the time. And Elaine also has the right of appeal because we've agreed to grant your application as well, so we've got right of appeal all round. The wording of the conditions will just sort of firm up a little bit, um, in the notice that you receive afterwards. Obviously, you've already agreed some with environmental health as well in terms of the noise, so premises licence will just need a bit of tweaking with the ones that are removed and the updated ones, but I'll confirm it all in writing to you, if that's all right.
Right, can I just ask, so you said the internal toilet, does that mean that it's been rejected that we build one in the outside area?
They want the internal toilet to meet the part M requirement so that it's fully wheelchair accessible.
So the toilet outside's a no-go then?
Pretty much, yeah.
Sorry, to, i- if we put a fully disabled, accessible toilet in the restaurant, there will be no space for a wheelchair to enter the restaurant, as in to go to, to their table. It's very narrow, the restaurant, there won't be no walkway.
Sorry, something's gone a bit weird there. So, members aren't happy with the outdoor provision for the wheelchair accessible toilet, that's the issue. That it's not something that we can get round, there's been no sort of agreement reached, it's just something that we're not considering to be acceptable, so they want it to be internal, if that doesn't work with your plans, I, I don't know how that works, I'm not an architect. I appreciate what you're saying, but they want this premises to have an internal wheelchair accessible toilet so that people don't have to go through the general.
Sorry, just to add on to what my brother mentioned, that proposal would actually make it more dangerous for disabled people to actually use the inside of the restaurant as well as members of the public who are at their tables and the members of staff that are bringing hot food and drinks over to their tables, so basically that condition would make it almost impossible to operate, actually absolutely impossible to operate as a restaurant safely.
I, I completely understand what you're saying, obviously we're not experts in this field, all we can go on is what we've heard today, that we want the internal toilet to be wheelchair accessible.
Also, just to interrupt you again, apologies, but it has been accepted by building regulations, they have had absolutely no issues, so they've given us the go-ahead, but it just does not make any sense that a different department is not, you know, since we've had the go-ahead from elsewhere, it just doesn't make sense that it would not reflect the same legal requirements or it would not, it would not be the same, considering it's already been granted and as you can see by this, they just are waiting for the, um,
Ventilation.
For the ventilation certificate, so that absolutely does not make sense to us and we are really unhappy about that decision, because it basically makes it impossible for us to trade as a business. Um, and I hope you can appreciate that, you know, currently it's very difficult to, to, to run a business in hospitality and we have struggled greatly, we've been trying to get this restaurant open since before the pandemic, a month before the, uh, the first initial lockdowns, twenty, uh, the, the March twenty, uh, twenty lockdowns happened. That was when we signed the lease, so there was no going back, so we've spent the past few years essentially paying rent for a premises that cannot open because we were in a pandemic and now going back into business, it, it, it will be very difficult and we have no choice but to carry on, but this, this decision absolutely is like the final stroke, will make it impossible for us to trade as a business. And I hope that, you know, members of the panel do realise this and the implications that it will have on us, both financially and also, you know, as we are trying to bring something to the community, we are trying to open a restaurant, an establishment in which people will feel safe and happy to come into, but, um, but yeah, we're just completely unhappy about this decision.
I, I am sorry, and I can only imagine, well, I can't imagine how difficult it must be, but unfortunately that, that is a decision we've come to, we don't always marry up with the planning regulations and laws that are in place as well. It is a bit of a broken system in terms of how that works, but unfortunately that's something much higher and above us. I'm afraid that is the decision of the subcommittee this morning, but like I say, you do have the right of appeal against that condition if you so choose to exercise it.
Apologies, but we both know that an appeal will cost between ten to twenty thousand pounds in terms of legal representation, but.
Yeah, no, I totally get it, but obviously it's not been an easy decision at all and we've had to consider lots of different factors, so we've not just got the licensing act, but looking at the Equality Act as well, it's so important to consider these things and public safety is the overriding concern at the minute, which is why they have come to the decision that they have today.
Sorry, um, I know this is not the appeal process here and.
Certainly isn't, and I appreciate how upset, well, how unhappy you are with the decision. We've laid it out, I don't feel we should be discussing the appeal, do you know, itself right now. And Sam Amther Bond will give you all the support that you need in order to do the appeal.
Yeah, I, I understand, I know this is not the appeal process, uh, but, um, it's just, we, we thought, when we come here, that, you know, the toilet was fine because of what we discussed with Elaine, so, but it's just, we thought we wouldn't be able to discuss with you guys, we didn't even discuss the toilets, uh, in terms of being accepted or not between us, uh, when we were talking during the summit.
I can stop you, we have discussed the toilet quite at length during the process today.
No, we've not discussed the toilet internal.
I really feel that we are going round in circles now.
Sorry, I mean, the toilet on the inside, it wasn't mentioned, it's just, I thought this is something for us where we can talk with you, uh, guys that have come today and, uh, like my sister said, I'm sorry for dragging this out.
Please don't apologise, but I really am going to end the meeting right now. No, I'm sorry, I am going to end the meeting right now, I do understand there is an appeals process to go through and we're going to take it at that, there's, you know, we have come as far and I'm, you know, kind of, I really, really do respectfully understand how difficult this is, but we have made our decision on the evidence that we have got. Okay, thank you.
Sorry, I know you wanna end this, but can I just, um, can I?
You can please respect the chair, I, I'm, I am going to end the meeting now, okay, thank you.